Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 at 6:00 PM. This is the Hanson Board of Selectmen's meeting, being recorded and televised by Whitman Hanson Cable Access. Please join with me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and before we begin tonight, I just wanted to take a moment of silence in remembrance of Jim Daly, who was pretty instrumental in our community, whether he was your teacher, or your coach, or the guy that organized your class trip abroad. It's a, I was saddened to hear his passing this past week. So just take a moment of silence. Thank you. And before we begin, I just wanted to do a shout out to all of our first responders, Highway Department, the Water Department, and everyone that has been involved with the storm.
Police, fire.
Police, fire, water, highway. Lisa on the phone, making sure everything's going right. So it just was, we were really hit. We were closed last week, two days, due to no power and our servers down. I know that I got a comment, "You guys have a nice generator out front, why aren't you guys open?" And it was because our computer servers were down, and realistically, if the computers aren't up, we can't do much here at Town Hall. So I just want to say a huge thank you to everyone. It's, it was a, we're still cleaning up from it today, so. Yeah, so thank you very much. So moving on to public announcements, Mr. Weeks.
Thank you. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Bylaws Review Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website at www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling Greer at the, nope. Or by calling the Selectmen's Office at 781-293-2131. Volunteers are also needed on the following committees: Bylaw Review Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Conservation Commission, Cultural Council, Disabilities, Facebook Upkeep Committee, Highway Building Committee, Historical Commission, Memorial Day Patriotic Observance, Memorial Field Trustees, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, Parks and Fields Committee, and Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. We have upcoming meetings, Board of Selectmen, November 16th, 2021 at 6:00 PM, and another Board of Selectmen meeting, December 7th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. That's it.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Weeks. So our first thing on our agenda is a presentation by our Veterans Agent, Mr. White, announcing Hanson as a Purple Heart Town designated by the Military Order of the Purple Heart. Mr. White?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I don't know if this arm works.
It does.
All right. So, as you may recall, specifically for Kenny, many months ago, we started this process to have the town of Hanson recognized as a Purple Heart community. And we finally got the signed proclamation and also a sign. That was, our first sign was made, I don't know where the TVs are. But, "Purple Heart Town." So this was actually paid for by the VFW in Halifax, on behalf of the Military Order of the Purple Heart. So I'm gonna order more. We probably need four or five. I've had lessons learned from other towns, by the way. So I wanted to show that to you, and then I'd like to read the proclamation, if I could. From the Military Order of the Purple Heart, "Town of Hanson, proclamation, Purple Heart community. Whereas the people of the Hanson Mass have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the citizens of our community who have selflessly served in the armed forces that has been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas citizens of our community have been killed in action while serving in the armed forces and have been posthumously awarded the Purple Heart for their ultimate sacrifice. And whereas citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their bodily sacrifice of being wounded by the hand of the enemy while engaged in combat. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration and was created as the badge of military merit, made of purple cloth in the shape of a heart with the word "merit" sewn upon it on August 7th, 1782, in Newburg, New York, by General George Washington, then reestablished as the Purple Heart on February 22nd, 1932, by General Douglas MacArthur. And whereas the heritage it represents is sacred to those who know the price paid to wear the Purple Heart. And whereas August 7th is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Day, and now therefore be proclaimed, we, the Hanson Board of Selectmen, hereby proclaim Hanson, Massachusetts, a Purple Heart community, honoring the service and sacrifice of those from our community who were awarded the Purple Heart while serving in our nation's wars. And also be proclaimed that Hanson, Massachusetts, will recognize August 7th annually as Purple Heart Day and urge our citizens and organizations to display the American flag as well as other public expressions of recognition of our Purple Heart recipients." And this was signed by Kenneth Mitchell, Chair, Board of Selectmen, back on March 24th, 2021. So, I'd like to show you.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
You know, one thing to note, I did talk to Jameson Shave, and he mentioned that they can put the signs up. So I am gonna do an order. There is gonna be a length of time for the signs to be developed, and by the time we receive them. So I am hoping at some point in the new year, we'll have the signs, we'll select the areas in which to place the signs. Basically, at the entrance of the town. I have learned in some other communities, unfortunately, every now and then, something like this gets stolen. So, I know in Halifax, they put one in front of the police station, and it doesn't get touched. Anyway, I, I'm gonna order a few more, they're very reasonable. And once I have them, you know, we'll come back to all of you to kind of figure out proper placement of where we want it at the entrance of the town.
Thank you for doing that.
Other than that, thank you very much, and that's it.
Good job, Jim.
Thank you very much, Mr. White.
Thank you.
That's fantastic.
That is. So thank you very much, Mr. White, for doing that. And thank you very much to Highway as well, for partnering up and making sure that we get them up along our roadways.
Mr. Chair, through you.
Sure.
Mr. White, are we going to try to organize some, something, at least for our inaugural year of this being, you know?
So, I don't know yet. It's not like, from my position as the Veteran and Service Officer of the town, I don't have a list of who is a Purple Heart recipient. I can look at DD-214s and so, but they're not always correct, because they do, the Purple Heart is awarded to military service members post-service. So a DD-214 is not the perfect document to figure it out. It's almost like you have to get the word out and ask the community to come together, and a lot of times, people just don't want to talk about wounds of war. So it's not, it's not something that I have in the office. But, I don't know, I'll think about some different ways, maybe to post something on the town's website, you know, in recognition of, you know, if we know of a few people who are willing to come forth, type thing. So it's a work of progress.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, in our executive session, maybe a meeting or two meetings ago, the Board of Selectmen has separated ways with our executive assistant from town employment. So I just wanted to announce that as it was done in executive session, just for transparency. And I also want to recognize the resignation of Diane Cohen from the Recreation Commission, effective December 1st. So I just want to say thank you very much for her years on the Recreation Commission. She moved to town, and she said, "How can I get involved?", and she joined the Recreation Commission. And has done so for four, five years now?
And she's accomplished quite a bit, and with a whole group of different people, and she's revitalized things. I really feel deeply grateful for her commitment and her perseverance. I mean, even in the middle of COVID, she managed to pull some events off, like, which seemed insurmountable. So, but, and so I thank Diane. I just want to clarify that we did not offer any type of buyout to our executive assistant, that there were no, there was no separation agreement, if you will, where we paid her out, or, you know, because she didn't have a contract. I just want to clarify that, because people have been asking and wondering, and I just thought we'd just lay it to rest.
Sure thing. Thank you very much, Ms. Kement. Camp Kiwanee, they are going to come back to us at a later time, just because they're not ready for tonight's discussion. There's some more planning that is involved with that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, do we want to vote on Diane's resignation?
Oh, yes, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to recognize the resignation of Diane Cohen.
So moved.
With regret.
With regret. And all in favor? Five oh. Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
Thank you, you're welcome.
So the next item on our agenda is to discuss insurance coverage of the Maqon building. Ms. Green?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We got notice from the insurance company that the premium to insure the Maqon has increased substantially. So our one-year premium to insure that building is $38,029. And the budget for that line item, we have $30,000, so we're $8,000 short. So I would like a vote from the board to request a reserve fund transfer from the Finance Committee to cover the $8,000. There's a copy of the letter and the premium in your packets, and it notes that the longer a property is vacant, the more chance there is of severe damage. We're gonna, we're gonna see these premium rise in the future, as we hold on to this, this building.
So, is there any discussion?
Well, I, can I just mention? So, we had the Maqon Reuse Building Committee. And originally, our lens was that we needed affordable housing for people that were over 60, I think 62 was where we drew the line, but in the 60s. Which we still have, and we still need. Unfortunately, after that was our original kind of objective, we've now had a lot of units go up that are not affordable, but nevertheless do target roughly the same demographic of over 55, and now we've got all the 40Bs. So as a committee, the Maqon Reuse Committee felt that the timing was not right for us to be doing affordable housing there. That, that we probably need to look at it being used for the library and the senior center, or rec, you know, some kind of recreation for the town. Still looking at reuse, but I ju, I just wanted to explain, because, you know, never would have been our intention to still have that building standing and not reused. But we are working on it, so I just thought I'd mention that.
Mr. Hickey?
Lisa, you weren't here last year, but I thought the premium last year for that building was around $25,000. And I know you weren't here, but does that-
That was kind of roughly what we were told.
Right.
And Lisa, is there anything we can do that would bring the premium down? For instance, I know on my own house and on my own cars and stuff like that, if you have robust security systems, if you can make some kind of representation that sort of like says, "Hey, you know, we, we are mitigating the risk that you're taking insurance company by doing these things." Is there anything like that that we can do?
I can certainly ask them. I can certainly ask them. I mean, their, their main focus is that the, the building is vacant. So that, that's, that's their main focus on it.
An attractive nuisance, we know that.
Yes, exactly. So I will definitely reach out to them and see if there's any way we can lower it. And, I said, the, last year, it might have been lower. They budgeted for $30,000 for the insurance, but it came in $8,000 higher. I did double-check that with Todd today.
All right, I mean, that said, so moved, we have to be insured, but I'm just hoping we can find a way to bring it down.
Sure.
I'll second that.
Second?
But then, through you, I have a question for Laura. Does the committee think that the building itself has any use at all in the future?
Yes.
You do?
Yes. We've been told, aside from the fact that, you know, I have to add a few caveats. Aside from the fact it's not ADA compliant, it doesn't have fire suppression, yada, yada. It's got asbestos, the list could go on, you guys all know what the deal is. Aside from that, the bones of it are extremely good. And the intention is, even as we've been talking to the library and the senior center, is to see if they could get grants or money to reuse that building.
Okay.
Now, it may be a case where, and in fact, the RFPs that we had gone all the way down the permrose path on with the, with the housing, we actually found people that were willing to reuse the building. So they, they were in agreement, and they had brought out people saying, "It's still, you know, like, sound. It's got, it's got some merit." There is the, there is a part, the old part, I guess, that isn't good and needs to be torn down, but the rest of it is in good shape.
It was built in the 60s, right?
Yeah, yeah, but there's a newer, I hesitate to say this, because the newer wing is like, I don't know, maybe late 70s or something, but it's all relative. So, and, and so, a lot of it is reusable and in good shape. And I was surprised, when we put out the RFP for the housing, that we actually had people come back and say, "Yeah, we could reuse it." It may come to an issue where, just economically, it's cheaper to tear it down. And if that's the case, then we'll do it. But we just want to make sure we've done our due diligence. If we can reuse it cost-effectively, we want to do that.
Right. And that's where I was going with it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so.
Quick, so a quick question. So, so with that RFP that folks were interested in reusing the building, was it the entire building, or was it just the front part of the building?
It was the whole building.
Okay.
And now, they came back, and they had said that, the one, that we got two, what I'd say, solid responses. One of them was like, "Did you even read what we put in the RFP?", because it was sort of like, "We're just gonna do whatever we want to do. It doesn't even matter what you guys said you were looking for." And they were putting like, a lot of house, you know, housing units and stuff like that. They wanted to tear down most of it. But there was one that was very good, and, you know, very solid, and from, from a company that's done units around us and came with a good reputation. And they planned on reusing three-quarters of that building. So, yeah. I think Ms. Cavado had it.
Yes, Ms. Cavado.
When we were, before I was on the reuse committee, there was a meeting where we, the library, senior center, met the reuse committee. This was when Mike was here. And at that point, we thought the gym there could be used as some type of community center.
Yeah, like recreation, yeah.
So we had the, let's say, library, community center, and senior center somehow figured it'd be something for the entire town, not just limited to one group or another. And then, when we were talking at the meeting, you still have the library, current library, senior center. I suggested town offices, because it's cramped here in this building. Someone else made the suggestion, even like a childcare place, for example, or medical. But, the lo, um, the library gets 50% from the best board of library commissioners. They will pay for the tear down. It comes out of the money, 50% that we get. But we have to be on the portion of Maqon. Like, if we're over here, I don't think they'll pay for the tear down.
Well, and the other reason why originally we had started looking at housing is when we met with library, and I know we're going way off script, but when we originally met with the library and the senior center, the queue for those grants was very long, it was like a 10-year wait. Well, now, it's a lot shorter. So they could get to the front of the line a lot quicker than they ever thought. And so, obviously, that library is still wonderful and is, is in, you know, is in good shape. It probably is gonna need a little shaping up or whatever. We don't, we haven't, the committee hasn't gotten to the point of making a solid recommendation, so I hesitate to say, but it's like, senior center, one building, library, the other, we'll see. But also try to cook in some kind of, like you said, use that gym for like, a, like, I don't know, like a, a community center, you know, where kids could have drop-in basketball games and that type of stuff, that isn't, not even kids, I mean, adults could do it without going through the school, you know, would be. So, lots of unanswered questions, but I mostly just wanted to say, I don't want you to think the Maqon reuse thing is dead, we haven't talked about it for a while. It's very much alive, it's just, we've had to take a sharp left, so.
And Ms. Green, is it possible, and I know I just asked if the whole building was being used in some of those RFPs, but is it possible for you, when you're on the phone, asking, "What can we do to help limit the premium", is it possible for you to also ask, you know, "If we remove a portion of the building", you know, I mean, because, and keep the gym, the auditorium, the kitchen and whatnot, just that front half of the building for right now, until we figure out exactly what we want to do? You know, I mean, just, just some options, so we can try to, when we have to come back and revisit it next?
And do we shop around on insurance? I know we're getting way off script, but I really, I have no idea about that. Like, for instance, I know I'm always trying to figure out, am I getting the absolute best premium that we can get? And, you know, a lot of times, companies, it's interesting how much they will discount, you know, knowing, "Oh, all right, we're gonna bundle this, you're gonna bundle that, you've got..." And I think we've got some pretty significant spending power here, and negotiating power. And I, I don't know, you know, are we locked in with somebody? And can we shop it around and say, "That's not acceptable to us"? I mean, understanding that they're working with underwriters, and so, some of those same conclusions will be reached, because it's, it is an attractive nuisance, but I'm just wondering, you know, if we could do a comparison. And I realize that's thrusting a lot on you, but I just, I'm wondering. I don't, I really don't know how that sausage is made, we've never talked about it.
That, that's interesting, is I, I haven't need, needed to, you know, I haven't, I've been asked the question about shopping around for insurance. I know there is a bidding process for insurance. We've gone with this company for years and years, and there is suggestions that come before, well, well before town meeting, that we prepare a bid on all of town services for insurance. So I'll have to look into the law and see if we can just kind of go to anybody, or are we limited? Or do we have to go out for a bidding process because of the amount? It's with, it's under the $50,000 threshold, so we can solicit, but does insurance, is insurance covered, covered under the 30B procurement, or is it one of the exceptions? I don't know if it is, I will look into that.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? All right. So, we have a motion and a second to ask for a transfer. All in favor? Five oh. All right, appointments. So I'm gonna do things out of order, because we have Mr. Santa Lucia in front of us to be appointed to Parks and Fields. Do you mind just coming to the podium real quick?
Yeah, I was just here.
I was just about to say, I think we know, I think we know who you are, especially from last time around, and it's great to see you stepping up. So I figured, is there any, Pepper, do you want to just give a quick?
I'll just give a, you know, a quick synopsis. I've been serving as president and now vice, treasurer, president and now vice president of Hanson New Soccer, three kids in the schools. I've been here, I've been on town, town hall, town meeting floor, talking about the need to fix the part of the school, the fields adjacent to the schools. I understand there's some departures from Parks and Fields. It looks, it seems as though there's a need for new blood. And as I transition away from the soccer organization, I, I thought I would put my energies towards Parks and Fields. Just, I mean, you guys are okay with it?
Great.
I'm thrilled with, with you stepping up, thanks, Pepper.
Any questions from the board? Okay. So, with that being said, I'm looking for a motion to appoint Mr. Santa Lucia to Parks and Fields.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Always before Jim, just so you know.
All in favor? Say aye. Five zero. All right.
Thank you, and I think, Ken, you said we might be expecting more resignations.
Yes.
Okay.
So going back to the top of the list, appoint Mary Mercier to the new Democratic, as the new Democratic registrar to fill the vacancy of the retired registrar Donna Spencer, term ending 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh. Next item on the agenda is to appoint Benjamin Fletcher to the Disability Committee as well as the Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee. Or do you guys want to do two separate votes on that?
Well, I don't want, no, I don't, I mean, that's totally up to you guys, but as far as the Disability Committee, Lisa, I don't know that that committee has been meeting. I believe it's a TA committee. And I know Mr. McHugh had some traction, and had a couple of people, and started meeting, and getting a little, you know, kind of thing going, and I don't think anything happened with it after that. So I'm hopeful that after we get the office settled, we get you some backup, and, you know, Chief Cook and Bottawash, that we might be able to reengage on that committee and, and, because I think it's, it's important, you know, they, I know they were talking about accessibility and inclusion and a lot of that, and, and I think, you know, I, I often think about it, even this town hall isn't super, you know, it, it's not super accessible. So, anyway, no, I, I'm fine with, with bundling it, and if you're accepting a motion, I would make that motion.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, for stepping up.
Absolutely, and also to Ms. Mercier. We have a one-day liquor license for Lea Snowdale, November 19th, 7:00 PM to 11:00.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Say aye. All right. Five oh. And we're kind of approaching 6:30 for our joint meeting with the Board of Assessors for the classification hearing. But, to fill that gap? We have one member. So, to kind of fill that gap, do we want to do Town Administrator's Report just for a little bit? And we'll switch over when the time comes.
I can be quick.
All right, Ms. Green?
So just, first want to address the storm and the power outages and the amount of damage that we endured last week. Normally, when we have storms approaching, we watch the weather. I've had meetings with all, with our department heads of what our plans were. I don't know, the storm, I don't think anybody thought it was gonna be what it was, or it was worse than many people expected. Nobody expected 100% power outages in this entire area, the Cape and the Islands. So we found ourselves in very new territory. I did the best that I could, Stephen Moberg did the best he could with what we had available. I mean, both of my phones were charged. I lost power at one point at 4:00 in the morning, and then everybody else. But I spent, I was on the phone with our chairman, with Steve Moberg, trying to get messages out there about Town Hall. Unfortunately, with cell service not running, and some, some people didn't get messages, they didn't get text messages. Our town clerk helped out as well, trying to get in touch with people. Our police, fire, highway, excellent, excellent response. They, again, we all did the best we could with the limited resources that we had. Town Hall does have a generator. Unfortunately, when power goes out, and by the time the generator kicks on, we do, we did lose some servers, so even though I was trying to send emails, I was getting server rejections. And so we, we worked out very hard, we, we know what we need to do to improve before the harsh winter sets in, as far as getting our lists up to date. Steve Moberg, our IT Director, is looking into a system so that we can send out text messages, a broadcast, to all employees through our phones. So it's just one message and out to everybody, instead of trying to send multiple messages, because that's what drained my batteries, and I was trying to limit my phone use to keep my batteries alive. But we're well on our way to fixing that and, and being ready for the next storm. But just kudos to everybody on our response times and, and the work that everybody put in to get us through that, those two days. I want to just give a shout out to our, one of our Facebook Committee members, Upkeep Committee members, Scott Davis.
Yes.
He actually, with the car show, he did a lot of promoting, and put flyers all around town, and I neglected to mention him last time, so I want to definitely thank him for all of his promotions and all of his work for the car show.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
So, you've done a postmortem with all department heads and everybody about what we did well and what we didn't do well.
Yes.
Okay, and, and I think, I, I had mentioned to you, and this is, and I really want to clarify, because I know this was a you-know-what storm. And everybody did absolutely do the best they could. But I'm really hoping that going forward- could, um, but I'm really hoping that going forward, um, we could try to do a better job of a consolidated message of library, senior center, what the fire and police have got to say, uh, you know, through the town website and on our Facebook page, and again, I, and I told you this privately, and I, and I know that you're inheriting this, or this is not on you at all, um, I just am hoping that prospectively, like, we can just do better, you know, Halifax and Hanover have like a consolidated, I think Whitman does too, um, that they'll send out, and, and it just helps, because I think if people are panicking, they don't want to have to look at everybody's different Facebook pages or different websites, they just would like to have one kind of like, this is everything I need to know, dump's open, it isn't open, whatever, you know, town hall's closed, whatever, that type of thing, so, I'm just kind of hoping prospectively we could work on that.
Yeah, that's, we're definitely, like I said, we're working on the system for the phones, we could just set on one message, one message, and the, uh, website, again, um, we'll put together something just for storms, um, fortunately, our IT director has a generator, so he had internet, and he was able to get all these messages out the best he could, so, definitely moving forward, we, um, are working on improving systems.
All right, thank you, sorry.
All right, um, and I'm just going to switch gears real quick to hearings, well, I'll revisit, um, in a second, Mr. Cohen, but for right now, seeing how it's, uh, we have a hearing at 6:30, uh, with the Board of Assessors, um, I just want to welcome you guys and see if you guys are all set for.
Have you guys got a quorum? We have our chairman here, but.
And they had a post and stuff like that.
Kathy Keef, who is another member, has, um, she's the assessor in Whitman, and she has a meeting this evening, but Joshua Adams, our new.
New member?
Member, is new.
Sure.
So maybe we should just pick a truck on.
Nope, nope, we're not in recess, thanks, Heather. Mr. Cohen, Cohen, you had a comment, just going back to the Town Administrator's Report while waiting?
I don't know if the Town Administrator was done with her report before asking the question.
Oh, nope, uh.
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, okay, so at the last, uh, select, hi, I'm Kevin Cohen, 493 Spring Street, at the last meeting on October 19th, you guys had a vote to get bids for investigators for the, in regards to the Article 34 town meeting, I, I just wanted to see if there was an update on that?
We did get one so far, yes, that I was, um, our town council forwarded to me on Saturday, October 30th.
Okay, and is there a plan to get more than one?
She has solicited more than one, yes.
Okay, and then, is there a process after that, that you will vote which one to use, or, or if you're going to use one at all?
They, they will, the, the selectmen will look at the proposals, and then they'll vote on which, which investigator to, uh, bring on.
Okay, is, will that happen at the next meeting?
It will go on the agenda as soon as we have all the proposals, and yes, we, we have to wait for all the people that we solicited, that our town council solicited to forward the proposals, so we're waiting on that right now, um, and as soon as we get them all, she will send them to me, I can put them together, hopefully, if we do get them by the time for the next meeting, I can put them on the agenda.
If we can't, is it possible for us to do a one-off meeting, so we can just get this going, we don't have to drag this on?
If the board, if the board wants to meet.
Yeah, just a quick, like, to just do that.
Yeah, that was just my concern, that it was just going to be like, you know, kicked down the road, and just kind of delayed as much as possible, so that, you know.
Why would you think that I would do that?
No, no, so, so, no, I think, I think.
I'll tell you why, because I, I wasn't able to speak at the last meeting, and, um, you did have the town lawyer here, so there was no reason why I shouldn't have been able to speak the last meeting, so that's one reason, but there, there is multiple reasons, but I, I don't think that's something that you want to get into in public session.
So, so.
Mr. Cohen, I.
I, I'm just going to cut it off here, that, um, so.
As in, as your question.
Nope, nope, and, nope, and I, I see your concern that it might be kicked down the road, but I can assure you, we're not kicking it down the road, we just have to go through the protocols of what we have to do.
We did unanimously vote to, to pursue it, so I, I, yeah.
So, um, so with that being said, um, Ms. Green, um, you had also on here for your Town Administrator's Report for CARES Act checks?
Yes, so, um, I, on Friday, I did receive four CARES Act checks, um, that we, that was for four submissions for the amount of $684,000, um, a lot of the checks from these submissions had to do with the schools, for the technology, for, um, long-distance learning, the Chromebooks, the laptops, um, also to provide for sanitizing, cleaning services for the school buses, the schools, PPE, the vaccination clinic that we had, COVID testing equipment, um, so those four checks, like I said, added up to about $684,000, so I wanted to report that, um, wanted to give a quick personnel update on the vacancies, so we are in the process of scheduling interviews for the administrative assistant to the town planner, um, hopefully, we'll be able to do those this Thursday, um, we have collected quite a few, um, responses and resumes for the municipal assistant in the town, treasurer collector's office, um, she has all the resumes that she's reviewing, and she will get back to me on when she's done for, so we can set up interviews, executive assistant, uh, that deadline was Friday, and I'm just going to start going through the resumes, I have been going through them and have picked out a few candidates, and hopefully, uh, either next week or the week after, um, we can get some interviews scheduled for that position, as well as our custodian, who retired on Friday, uh, that posting has been in, in the express, and we have until this Thursday to collect resumes, and I, I do have, um, so far, one submission.
Perfect, and then also too, just for a personnel update, Tony, our town planner has just joined us last week.
He joined us on October 25th, yes, he's settling in very nicely.
Excellent.
Question, Mr. Jeff.
Yes.
Um, Lisa, question, did, were you able to get back, um, any information as far as securing the Hawks Ave building?
Yes, um, well, actually, I did talk to Carrie Glass, our, uh, building commissioner, he was going to gather some quotes to board up the doors, um, I don't know if the windows on the higher area of the building will be boarded up, but the lower area will be on one of the buildings, um, he has not gotten any quotes yet, um, unfortunately, the storm hit, he had reached out, the storm hit, so, we're a little delayed, but we are working to get some quotes to, uh, secure that building.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the two buildings, I should say.
And then, um, and then the other update too, that I just kind of wanted to, I was really excited, um, the newest tourist attraction in the town of Hanson, the Cell Tower, down at Hanson Middle, it is now standing, so we are one step closer to maybe a more, uh, cell reception here, so, it's pretty exciting, so just go around back and you'll see it standing there, so.
Are we going to charge?
That's great news.
That'll be the little fundraiser for the 200th anniversary, Jim.
Whatever it takes.
That committee's almost established.
That's, that is good news.
So I just got a text from Joshua, and he's stuck in traffic, um, do we still need a quorum if the board is not.
Do you guys have to vote?
If you're not deliberating.
Not deliberating.
They don't need a quorum.
No deliberations.
No, if you, yeah, if, we're, we're going to deliberate, but if you're just presenting, and they're just here for support, then you, they don't need a quorum, I don't think.
Nope.
I am Lee Gamache, I am the assessor for the town of Hanson, um, Trish O'Kane is the chairman of the Board of Assessors, and tonight, the presentation is going to be done by my, um, assistant Denise Alexander.
Woo-hoo.
Okay, and off we go.
I think she set you up.
I do so, she asked me. No, I asked.
Only, only come out.
That's what makes you up.
You're mentoring here.
We wouldn't do that.
Okay. Good evening, again, I'm Denise Alexander, for anybody that doesn't know me, the assistant assessor in Hanson, um, and we've already introduced our board, and I want to move on to, um, and everybody that wants a handout, anybody that needs a handout, there are handouts here, if anybody would like one, okay, so we're going to go to page two of the classification booklet, on page two, it shows an outline of the required actions that the board of selectmen will be voting on this evening, votes and actions to be considered this evening are, one, the uniform tax rate, or a split tax rate, two, residential exemption, and the third will be the small business exemption, the recommendations of the Board of Assessors at their regular meeting on October 25th, 2021, are as printed on page two, the purpose of the classification hearing is to determine whether the town of Hanson will continue to utilize a single tax rate for all classes of property, or to split the tax rate, shifting the burden toward the commercial, industrial, and personal property from the residential class, we're here to present the uniform, we're here to present the information compiled by our office for the allocating of percentage of tax levy to be borne by each property class, on page three of the booklet, it displays the scenarios of how the tax rate would shift between residential and commercial properties, based on our current information, the tax rate is estimated at $15.09 per thousand for 2022 fiscal year as a single tax rate, down one cent, on page four, the pie chart of the percentages between classes is represented here, residential class is, is our primary class, it's at 93%, the commercial, industrial, and personal property combined make up 7%. And on page five and six, this, this presents the detailed tax dollars, amounts affected by the tax rate, if we were to adopt a split tax rate using the average single-family, average residential, and average commercial industrial assessments, Hanson has a such a small commercial property, including, uh, includes commercial property, industrial, and personal property at only 7%, that adopting a split rate would shift the larger burden on the commercial industrial property owners, Hanson's Board of Selectmen have always voted to maintain a single tax rate for this reason, it's usually not recommended with less than 80 to, an 80/20 ratio. And at this point, um, I ask the Board of Selectmen to, um, take a vote on whether to adopt a uniform, um, tax rate or a split tax rate, and the Board of Assessors have recommended a uniform tax rate for 2020.
So I'm looking for a motion for, um, a vote for a uniform tax rate?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, is that what you need, Lee?
Mm-hmm.
All right, perfect, um, all in favor? Five oh.
And then on page seven and eight, we give you a three-year comparison of the values of the average residential condo, the average residential, um, condo, commercial, industrial, and average single, uh, family home as well, um, as you can see, you know, the values have been increasing each year, and continue to do so, um.
It's unbelievable how close the average condo and average house price is, it's really quite an eye-opener.
So, and now, uh, the resident, so now we're going to page nine, and page nine shows you, um, another action for the Board of Selectmen to take, and that is the residential tax exemption, the residential tax exemption is for property owners of Class 1 residential property who own and occupy their property, a percentage is applied to exempt a dollar amount of value that is exempt from taxation, typically, this is adopted in communities that have a high, higher rental properties, like Boston, Brooklyn, and also the Cape and the Islands would have high rental properties in their towns, historically, Hanson has opted not to adopt the residential exemption, and the Board of Assessors recommend, um, to not adopt the residential exemption, as it will shift the burden of the tax levy to the other properties.
I'd like to make a motion, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, no, I'm just going to hand it over to you.
I'd like to make a motion to, to have us opt, not opt, to adopt the residential tax exemption, did I say that right, Lee?
You did.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh. All right.
So the third, um, action by, for the Board of Selectmen this, this evening, is the small commercial exemption, and, um, legislation in 1994 added an option to, to the property tax classification law, it is the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to decide if the small commercial exemption will be adopted by the town of Hanson, adoption of this provision does not guarantee that the reduction in taxes will be passed on to the small business owners, as the exemption is applied to the real estate, for example, assume that Shaw's Plaza is under a million dollars, and, and each business employs less than 10 employees during 2020, the Plaza owner would qualify for, to receive the exemption, but not the individual businesses, business owners, according to the Department of Employment and Training, Hanson has 47 businesses, which would qualify for the small commercial exemption, if each is situated in a property assessed under a million, 29 businesses occupy properties, yet they do not own the property, and would not, only, and would only benefit if the property owner passed the savings to the business owners, there's only 18 businesses in Hanson that would actually benefit from this exemption, historically, Hanson has opted not to adopt the small commercial exemption, and, um, our Board of Assessors, um, does not, um, recommend, um, the, um, small commercial exemption.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we opt not to adopt the small commercial exemption.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh.
So, um, lastly, um, I must, um, notify the Board of Selectmen of the excess levy capacity for fiscal year 2022, the excess levy capacity for 2022 is $14,241.73, and this does not require a vote, this is just a notification as part of the classification hearing, and on the, on behalf of the Board of Assessors, we, and myself, I would like to thank the financial team of the town of Hanson, our town accountant Todd Hassett, and treasurer collector Jean Sullivan, and our assessor appraiser, Lee Gamache, um, and I, the last vote is to close the classification hearing, passing that on to you.
All right.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
Uh, in regards to the, uh, the pie chart here.
Yep.
Is, is there an estimation over the next year of whether or not residential will remain at 93%?
It has for quite a while now, so chances are, really good it's going to stay that way.
So even with, um, growth, uh, fast growth of residential, um.
It would have to, it would, it would have to be more commercial, industrial, and personal property within the town, growing and shrinking the residential, because it's a higher shot in relation to.
So, so, I guess my question is, with the amount of space that we have designated as business, industrial, um, in town, and there's no way, we're not making any more of that industrial or commercial, so, um, you, you kind of stated the amount of businesses that you, we have in town, and residential growing, wouldn't the residential grow as well?
Yes, and, and.
And go above 93%?
It could, yeah, it could well go up, and, and so couldn't commercial, industrial, possibly, I mean, depends.
I didn't know if there was any projected figures on that for the next year.
No, no projection, but it's been this way for quite some time, and we're, we're primarily residential in Hanson.
Okay.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh, the hearing is closed.
Thank you so much.
That was like, we did it ourselves.
Thank you.
It was better than Lee.
Hey, I have Lee to backing up, that's why, okay?
All right, uh, with that being said, I am looking for a motion to enter into executive session to discuss with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares to Whit, Town Administrator, and Clerical Union for Library Positions, and this is to go into executive session and adjourn.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Seconded, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Weeks?
Aye.
Ms. Galloway?
Aye.
Me, aye?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Perfect, excellent, thank you very much.